You've got a card there.
Oh, Brent. Everybody ready? Good evening. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Service Committee to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Tomian, Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greathop.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here. So we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you sit down, gentlemen, if you'd like to remove your jackets, it's awful hot in here tonight.
Goodness.
Uh-oh. Somebody had a birthday. Who didn't take their jacket? Oh, the guy in the white shirt didn't.
The guy in the white. Wow, look at that.
Jeff, you're out of uniform.
I do have a black one now that hence says Beelzeal over 50.
All right, let's get back to business. Item number two, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Funny, guys.
Seeing none?
Make a motion, we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Citizens to be heard, I have one card for Brent Gillette from, I'd like to speak about the United Way.
Thank you very much. Like was said, my name is Brent Gillette and I am the campaign coordinator for St. Clair County. I want to thank you for allowing me to bring my guest, this year's campaign chair for the countywide drive, for the 2018 United Way Countywide Drive. More than anything, I want to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners. You guys do a lot of great things in our community and I want to thank you on behalf of the citizens of our community because you do work behind the scenes that people don't see every day. And I want to publicly say thank you on behalf of United Way and the 12,000 people that we touched last year for the gift that you gave unselfishly as public servants in our community. Not only do you take care of the county itself by coming together and making sure that we're on the leading edge of technology, on the leading edge of economic growth, but then you also take care of our community by giving up some of your hard-earned treasure to make sure that those resources are available when those fine citizens ask for that helping hand. So on behalf of United Way and the citizens that we affect every year and every day, thank you for your contributions to United Way. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brent. Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we move on to updates. Are there any updates from Commissioners? Seeing none, conceptual initiatives?
None.
None this evening. No old business. Item seven, new business. Item eight, being asked to an appointment for a commission on aging. Julie Wallace for a three-year appointment. Julie is from Chinatown.
Make a motion, we send that on to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, contract approval request for Phillips sign and lighting.
Make a motion, goes to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Just want to say that if you didn't read it close enough, there was a gentleman in Marine City that donated somewhere around $25,000 to the Marine City Library and he asked that it be used for that particular library since they don't have their own establishment. It had to come to the county, it went into the county piece, had to go out for bids, and Phillip's sign ended up with the bid that was needed. And even though there's a little bit more that needed to be put into this to get that sign, friends of the library stood up and I think there's a picture of it in there. It's a pretty good-looking sign. It's gonna be pretty fancy stuff. You'll see it when it's up and running. So that's the story behind it.
Yeah, his donation was a little over $25,000.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, St. Clair County Library System 2018 Closing Request, Final Action.
Motion to send it on to the full board.
No.
Final action.
For final action.
All right, make the motion for final action.
Support.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Proclamation Celebrating 40th Anniversary of the Advisory and Outreach Center, Final Action.
Make a motion, we accept the proclamation for final action.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item eight. Is that gonna be presented?
Does somebody hear from the library?
Well, yes.
Yeah.
Do we have it?
We can present it right now if you want. Who's got it?
Right here.
Now that you want to come up?
How are ya? Good. This is a proclamation celebrating the 40th anniversary of the St. Clair County Advisory and Outreach Center, formerly the Library for the Blind and Physically Handicapped. Whereas the Library for the Blind and Physically Handicapped has been a core department of St. Clair County Library System since 1978. And whereas Pratt Smoot Act of 1931 established free library service for blind persons under the Library of Congress Administration. And whereas the LBPH, that's the organization, transitioned to an advisory and outreach center in partnership with the State of Michigan's Braille and Talking Book Library in 2017. And whereas, St. Clair County AOC provides the free loan of talking books and talking book players, large print and braille books, magazines, and descriptive videos to any resident with one or more of the following disabilities: legally blind, visually impaired, physically disabled, and reading disabled, and those who cannot read standard print living in the counties of Huron, St. Clair, Santa Lac, and Tuscola. And whereas the St. Clair County AOC provides assisted technologies to allow the disabled equal access to the resources offered by the St. Clair County Library System. And whereas the AOC provides personalized reader advisory services from trained staff and collection services at 20 sites across four counties, and online to nursing homes, hospitals, schools, independent and assisted living facilities, and library branches of St. Clair County. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim that a celebration for the 40th anniversary of AOC LBPH will be held at the main library in Port Huron on October 10, 2018, and urge all citizens to visit their local library on this special day to celebrate and acquaint themselves with the many services offered. And further, to join us in extending our commendation to those who have worked diligently to make this service an asset to our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board supports the community and the St. Clair County Library System in such commemorative celebrations as may be consistent with the proclamation of appreciation and recognition of 40 years of public library service in the citizens of St. Clair County. Proclaimed this fourth day of October 2018, Jeff Bohm, Chairperson, Bill Greathop, Vice Chairperson, and Commissioners McConnell, Tomian, Heidemann, Dunn, and Rushing. Melba, congratulations.
Thank you.
Want to say anything?
Thank you. The library intends to continue to provide services for this community and also we have home connections for people who don't meet these criteria but are unable to get out and go to the library. So we hope to continue to expand and assist our citizens. Thank you.
Melba, could you stay there for a second? My neighbor, remember, two years ago now, actually, three doors down from me, he's an elderly gentleman, extremely active, lost his eyesight, you know, one winter and he came back from Florida and couldn't drive anymore. You know, he was a guy that had a Harley, had to get rid of his bike and really, you know, he was a different guy. He was depressed big time. And he came to me and I had said, and I can share his name, he doesn't have a problem with it, Floyd Ross, said Floyd, I'd like to take you up and introduce you to the library services that we have at our library. So I took Floyd up, I reached out to Allison, she put me in touch with you, and you sat down and talked to him about all the different services and everything that they have to provide. It was really the first time that I had ever been exposed to it on that level. You know the service exists, but until you know somebody that gets introduced to it and so on and so forth, it's absolutely made a huge change in his life. And I see him and he still thanks me all the time for that because he personally, he didn't know that it really existed. He didn't live in that world. When, you know, when that struck him, the library became such a critical part of his life today and he, I know he uses the service all the time. So I just, I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight, are there any other human service matters? Item number nine, information only, the Health Department, September 2018, points of interest.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 10, receiving file?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support. Discussions? We're done. All in favor?
Aye.
Two seconds. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tomian, Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Present.
Commissioner Greathop.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here. Are there any additions, changes, deletions to the agenda?
I'd move to accept.
Support.
We have motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, are there any updates?
Greg, I just got a quick one. It kind of ties in with some of the public safety and some of the other things that we've been working on. I was in Lansing this morning. I had to testify in front of the House regarding the small cell bill, the Senate Bill 637, which has to deal with the small cell deployment that they're working on statewide to put in these communities. I went and spoke in front of the Senate probably six months ago. There were some additional tweaks that came along with it, some write-aways, some fees, like anything. When the bill was first introduced, there was, you know, probably 50/50 as far as for and against, and they continue to work on those different issues to get it to the point. And really, one of the messages that we had spoke today, and, you know, just the technology, if you look at St. Clair County and probably Dave out in some of your rural areas, I mean, there's no internet, cell phones, you know, those types of things. That reality of that still exists in our county today. You know, the small cell is a piece of that puzzle because when the question was, you know, asked back to me from one of the representatives, well, you know, small cells only work in a, you know, certain area. And I said, well, it's ironic that you brought that up because the biggest problems we're having right now are in our areas that we had good coverage before. And then about a year and a half ago, they had to turn the signal strength down. So if you drive along the coastline, which is, you know, our most populated areas, I'm in Marine City to Port Huron every day and I guarantee you there's at least six-plus spots that I just lose everything on the way, right? So the small cell technology will help strengthen the signals with that. There against, in some of the more rural areas, you need the towers, but the small cell is also a piece of it. So you're going to see that pass 15 for today. I know it's going to be going to the House floor for a vote and looking for the governor's signature on that. 25 other states have this in place right now and they're just looking to do, you know, the same thing. So it's just, you know, keeping up with the Joneses, additional infrastructure and you can't move forward in this world, you know, without it. It's kind of a cute story because after the meeting, one of the guys that came up to me, he said, you know, I'd look to buy a house in Lexington, three miles north of Lexington. He says, I'm gonna work from home and do all this stuff. Says I walked out to the water, no bars on my cellphone, my cellphone didn't work. He said, no way, I can't, I can't do it, you know? So that's a prime example of not having, you know, infrastructure in place that, you know, to lose on those opportunities. It's just, whether you like it or not, or, you know, it's stuffs and writeaways, it's just a reality of that we need to have that technology to help, you know, move St. Clair County forward and, you know, put you in a better place.
If I could piggyback on that, that's exactly what we need to fix the holes that we have. If you go back inland and you can take that tower at full strength and go 360 degrees, you're gonna have it, everything working. But when you're trying to shoot up and down the river and that thing meanders the way it does, there's gonna be pockets where you don't get it. And so you need a small piece to come in or that shoots a quarter or a half a mile in each direction like this, and you'll close up those pockets and you'll be able to use that phone up and down that whole area. We were just informed today at a meeting we had on broadband that the Marine City has just contracted with AT&amp;T to put five of them in their downtown area. Now their downtown area is only about five blocks long, maybe a half a mile at most, and they're gonna put five of them down there from the north end to the south end. It'll fill up that whole town. Everything will work inside the buildings. They're just gonna permeate it with some good reception and stuff.
Yeah, these things aren't crazy big either. A lot of them would look like a light pole. They have designs on them where you can actually put lights on top of them.
You won't even know they're there.
Yeah, yeah, it's, they...
I know there was a problem with the road commission and a few other things, but I think they ironed all that stuff.
Yeah, they got, that was part of earlier and they worked through some of the different issues and stuff.
Good stuff. Good you went and did that. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Rushing?
Yes, I want to bring up Bob Phillips. I talked to Jeff and I've talked to Carrie on this. Bob Phillips was a fireman that passed away last week. He, I believe it was Monday, he went on two runs with the fire department. He was one month old in May and there was nothing, he had no illnesses, but he passed away in his sleep. So, but I give this information to, so we can have a proclamation in two weeks. I want to thank Shane Hernandez for his efforts. The Governor Snyder, on the day after he passed, he had the American flag and the Michigan flag flown at half-mast in his honor. Shane Hernandez has gotten me the Michigan State flag and the documentation for that date. He's working on getting me the American flag. If he can't get me the American flag, he'll get me a duplicate of the flag rather than the actual one, but also the documentation. I will contact City of Memphis and also the Fire Chief, Justin Diaz, and ask what steps he wants to take once I get this stuff together. But I want to give that, all that stuff, 39 years, a long time. And this is a volunteer fireman. He served the community in St. Clair County for 39 years since he was 23 years old. Passed away at 62.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just, we had central dispatch meeting today. We've been working in Marine City with their fire department, with the radios. We think we have maybe a fix, I don't know. It's working right now. It's some new prototype antennas that have worked for the people that have them. We have more ordered. It's a huge improvement. We got to give a big shout-out and thank you to Tina Bricker, who is going to be our new director in November, November 1st. She's acting right now since Tim retired. And she took this project on and has done a great job. And there's, there's a lot more to do, trying to deal with the FCC and see if we can get some bump up in the amount of wattage or whatever it is, whatever it is that we had to turn down because we're on the Canadian border. So, so it's going pretty smooth. Finally, I, Bill was at a meeting, Jeff was at a meeting, we went there. I've been to a couple of them and they seem quite happy that they're getting results. And, but more importantly, they're getting radios at work. So that's the bottom line. We just don't want people being left unannounced when they're needed to be called upon.
Greg, I just wanted to add one more thing to the small cell piece of it. This is, the small cell bill's not for any one particular carrier, right? Multiple carriers will have the ability to put in a pole. They'll be able to lease based on other carriers. So this isn't a Verizon issue, this is an AT&amp;T issue, this isn't a Sprint issue, this is just...
It's a connectivity issue.
It's a connectivity issue, so.
Perfect. Any conceptual initiatives, Carrie? Seeing no old business. Under new business, District Court renovation project is up for final action.
I'll make a motion for this for final action.
Support.
Now we're gonna have discussion.
Now some conversation?
This was a team effort. We had lots of meetings with all the parties involved. And court security has been an issue for the courts for many years, as you know. This, what we're asking here today basically for final action is the permission to go out for, request for proposal for enhancing the security issues down at the Marine City District Court. This will also include the MIDC requirements of, that are required to be implemented within the next 120 days. So I don't know if you guys want to add anything to that. There's a, I got a list of the details. I know that you guys have read what's in your packet. It's basically a new security station, new front entrance, a new location for bringing the inmates in. There's a lot of soundproofing for the various attorney-client meeting rooms, as well as the judiciary chambers, and the Victims' Rights Office as well for the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. The funding has been approved by the Chief Judge and the other parties, Prosecuting Attorney's Office and the MIDC, as well as the Public Improvement Fund. So I don't know if you have any specific questions. And staffing was, is going to be included in the 2019 budget. Mike can speak on that.
Thank you. I began, started working the district court when I was 18, so that's 20 years ago, and nothing has changed, including the pictures on the walls. But ultimately, we had security down there when I was a probation officer. We had folks at the front door manning those stations. And due to necessary budget cuts, that was removed. We had the State Court Administrative Office come in, do an assessment of our area. And certainly in our, in this kind of tumultuous time, they recommended that we man this station full-time. Anytime that the court is open for business, that we have folks screening people coming into our court. Our district court provides a ton of service. You know, we've, you know, we have a large number of the populations downriver come in there for criminal matters and civil matters and traffic matters. We've expanded our services to include county clerk matters, gun permits. We're looking to expand further beyond that. So it's gonna be a full-service station for our county. Essentially, what we've done with this renovation project, if we were to man this thing, man the security station full-time right now, it'd take approximately four part-time folks. By doing this renovation project, the bulk of which is paid for through our MIDC, a RAP grant, and then through our building fund, we're able to pare that down to two folks, two part-time people, $28 per week at a cost of approximately $68,000. I've had discussions with our county administration about absorbing that into our existing budgets. Shouldn't be too much of an issue, relatively budget-neutral, but we've had those discussions. So I wanted to make the Board aware of any kind of ongoing costs beyond this. So that should be mitigated. Ultimately, it's a, it's a safety factor. You know, some of these things are required through our MIDC programs, but really, we're gonna be able to provide expanded services and we're gonna be able to provide a safe environment for our citizens and our employees.
I really don't have much to add. Mike Hallowitz, I'm the district judge presently assigned to the Marine City Court. Some of these, I, back to 89, I guess, go back to that court, and not much has changed except for the remodel that was done. One of the biggest problems that I do see, I would just want to point out, as you look at this, we're, one of the big changes that's gonna be made is the way the prisoners come into the building. Presently, we have them coming in through a back door, which is fine. We have no place to put prisoners at Marine City. We were basically, at this point, chaining them or handcuffing them to an existing bench in the hallway. We have no way to really keep that male-female separated. It's very much an antiquated system. This new program, this new idea that's been brought up by Mr. Vogon, will allow us to have two separate holding cells to keep, frankly, the prisoners that we do have separated and frankly, in a much more secure and safe area. That's one of the greatest things, I think, that's coming from this remodel from my perspective. So if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them for you. That's mostly the reason I was here. Since I'm there every day, if you had any questions at all, I'd be here to answer them for you.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say that Judge Hallowitz called one day and asked me to come down and take a look at it and he showed me what it was. I was absolutely surprised at the way it was set up and I thought, well, it's worked this long, but I don't know how much longer it's going to work. So we do need to do something. Desperately in need of it, and all of this is desperately needed. I heard on the radio today, they're talking about updating court systems throughout the entire state. And we're just a little bit ahead of that curve then by doing it right now. And it was, it was good stuff, very, very well needed.
Good. Are there, anybody else have any questions?
This also, this request tonight is also to include for the architectural and engineering phase as well, so.
So we have a motion in support for final action. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 7B, the fiscal year 2019 Traffic Enforcement Program Grant Application.
Make a motion, we forward this to the full board.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any questions?
Just one, why is it so low in number when we're in the 60s and 70s and then all of a sudden it drops to 34?
They put it down just to the city of Port Huron area. It used to be, it used to cover more of the county. So I believe we were 60-some thousand, 70-some thousand last year.
Yeah, 64, 72 the year before that.
Right.
Okay, so this is just...
This is just a grant that's gonna be, it's being more specific in territory.
Okay. Thank you.
We have motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, fiscal year 2019 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant Agreement.
I'd make the motion to move this to the full board.
Support.
We have motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, the 2018 Port Security Grant Agreement is for final action.
So moved.
Support.
We have motion and support. This grant is $137,000 total grant, $103,397 is federal money. There's a 25% match. There's a $10,000 donation from AT&amp;T. The balance of the money is gonna be coming from surplus sales from the dive team.
Dive team, yeah.
We have motion and sup, we need roll call for final approval.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes. Item E, Resolution 18-19, revising our animal control fee schedule.
Make a motion that we send this on to the full board.
Support.
We have motion and support. Are there any questions?
Um, I guess Carrie, because now that we're overseeing this, see, there's quite a bit of redactions in there. So I guess I can get with you later on that.
Yep, and our Director of Animal Control, Amy Warner, is here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Amy, do you want to get up in?
TV time, man. It's time.
Sure, this is fun stuff.
I got you.
Any questions about the fee schedule? Can I just tell you some of the things that's been going on at animal control?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I've been there six weeks now. So we've had some policy changes that have occurred there that have helped us bring more humane practices to animal control. We had a pretty nice mega meeting here in this building a couple of weeks ago where a lot of the community showed up. We had a three-part meeting, an hour for each section. We probably had at least 20 people in each section asking questions and sharing best practices. A lot of the people that were there were from the rescue and shelter communities. So we've done a lot with them in the last couple of weeks to build our relationships with the different shelters and rescues that are around the state to help transfer some of the medical and behavior issues that we have in the animals that are there. We have scheduled a couple of pretty nice events. On Saturday, we're part of the Bissell Pet Foundation Empty the Shelter event. So we hope to have probably at least 20, maybe 30 adoptions that day and quite possibly might even clear the shelter out of all of the adoptable animals. We took part in a volunteer fair this week at the museum. That was a... That was a lot of fun. I met a lot of people in the community that day. We did a lot of interaction with volunteers, but I think more so, I met a lot of the other nonprofits and just people in our community at that, at that location, so that was awesome. I don't know if you guys have seen the new cool logo that we are using now, but we have a, we have a fun logo that a friend of mine designed for us. He also designed the logo over at Genesee County Animal Control. It just helps us be a little bit more inviting and family-friendly, and puts us up more as a, yep, that's it, more as an adoption center. More still, public safety, we're not going to get away from that, that's our function there. So, we're, you know, we are focusing a lot on the public safety and getting everybody on the same page for what the laws are in our town, and, you know, really what we, what we're following and what our jurisdictions are. So, we're doing a lot of education with that. A lot of the kennel tracking, there's, like, there's no cage numbers at our facility or anything, so we're doing a lot more to organize our paperwork and our kennel tracking there to keep track of the animals and where they're going and all of that business. And then the volunteer piece that's there, we've been doing a lot with the volunteers there. I have a strong volunteer background, so when I came in there, we talked a lot to the volunteers and what was going on and what their concerns were. We've added a lot to the programs because of the volunteers. So, we're looking into foster program, into having them have a stronger role at animal control, like with adoption counseling and different roles like that. We're also going to open a lot more community education, and I feel like maybe animal control's role thus far, with all of the tension that's gone and, gone on, has been a feeling of punishment instead of support and education. So, I hope that animal control's role in the community now can be more serving our community, offering them education, and being able to support them in, in their needs. Like, you know, late for a license, I want to do some sort of rabies clinic or some sort of program that's going to help, like, bring everyone in to help with low-cost vaccinations and things, so that we can all get our dogs licensed in St. Clair County. And then using Shelter Pro for many more things than we, I mean, that program is amazing, and we're paying for it, so I think we're going to tap all kinds of things in Shelter Pro that we haven't utilized yet there.
Thank you, got to meet you, and you sound like you're very passionate and full of energy.
Awesome. You guys are fantastic, too. I did a lot of the commissioner meetings in Genesee County, and there are awesome people and everything, but you guys are super-involved here. I love it. Carrie has been amazing. Everyone in, like, the Human Resources Department has so many people that come down and volunteer and help us get dogs out. The hands-on that comes out of this administration building is like nothing I've ever seen before, so thank you guys, too.
Good. Commissioner Dunn?
I'm just curious, how many volunteers do you have, Amy?
Um, right now, there are 22 active volunteers. So, before I came on, they cleared out all of the volunteers and started from scratch with a new program. So, there's been 22 volunteers that have gone through the orientation, the training, and are hands-on there now.
Very good. Welcome aboard, we're happy to have you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I was just going to, if you remember, Amy, we came over and met with you in Genesee County, a couple of commissioners and stuff, and, you know, it was a long journey for us, probably a year and a half or whatever it was, and it was one of those decisions, we knew we were...
Two years and two months.
Going to make some changes and do some things, but, you know, you want to make sure when you're moving forward, you're doing the right things, you know, because it was the, you know, something we didn't want to just, you know, you know, make a wrong decision, and it comes back to us again, and so on and so forth. So, I got to give the commissioners a lot of credit. We did a lot of due diligence on it, and I commend Carrie on our selection and very, getting a lot of very good, positive feedback in a, you know, short period of time, and, you know, it makes my life a lot easier, I can assure you.
Awesome. There is a lot of passion and compassion in this community, so it's, it's not easy, but it's made it a lot easier to have a community that supports the changes as much as they do here.
I think we are all very comfortable with the decisions that was made. It took us a long time to get there, but I believe that everybody on this board, administration included, and a lot of the audience people that were here to support us and kind of prod us along a little bit. I think that everybody is happy with the direction that we're going right now.
Well, I'm pretty stoked, too, so thank you.
Amy has a very open-door policy, and I would recommend anybody stop in there, but if you want to get it to her, a phone call would probably be appropriate. She told you what she did in six weeks, so it's not like she's sitting on her hands. So, I know that she would like and welcome anyone to come in there, but if you really want to get a, a good idea of what's going on, you know, just give a holler, so she knows that you're coming ahead of time, so she can make time for you.
And I will.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, would the, some of them need to volunteer, rushing. All right, so we had motion and support for item F, Resolution 18-19, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also, item F, Resolution 18-21, Animal Control and Protection Ordinance?
So moved.
Support.
We have motion and support, send to full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other judiciary and public safety matters? You know, we do need to be, thank the city of Marysville for sending Mayor Damon in tonight to sit with us. We appreciate his company. Carl is a little under the weather after he had a little bicycle accident, broke a couple ribs, had a little mishap, so he's going to be, he didn't want to come around us because we tend to make him laugh, and when you have broken ribs, that's not a good thing.
I appreciate Mayor Damon not taking over the conversation tonight, also.
Yeah, that's, it's odd.
That's not like him.
Right? I think he's got a cold or something. Motion received and filed?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries?
Motion adjourned.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Tomlin, Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Not seeing any, I would call for a motion to prove agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental and public works matters? Seeing none, we'll go to updates from commissioners. Any updates? Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, I just, I went to the Riley Township meeting. There's a bridge out, so I'm going to give you a quick rundown, and then we'll go forward, potentially anyways.
Is that a railroad bridge or a...
No, it's a box culvert, and it has the Burgess Drain going through. The project will take five to six years under the current format for Riley Township to get that road back in service, which would affect public safety and EMS, that type of thing, school buses. So, Riley Township does not have the matching funds to put this in. So, I talked with Kurt Weston. He has got the assistance fund there, $100,000, so he's got $100,000 toward the 250. What he needs is the 150 to match it, and he can do the project in 2019. I've talked with Al Titus, which is supervisor of Riley, also Bob Wiley, it's the county drain. He has no money to put forward, but potentially, if the county, or like we did for Ira Township, or the drain commissioner can front the money, Riley Township, from my understanding, and it has to go through the Board of Trustees, of course, we'll get all the figures and potential agreements. Stacy in Lansing works at Drain Commissioner Shildur, do the drafting of the agreement, but we'll see where the window goes, but has come up about $150,000. Whether that's a 10-year, a 20-year payout, I don't know, whatever the township can potentially do, they'll look at it. But would like the commissioners to be thinking about that, potentially to help them out to get that road back in service by next year, rather than another five to six years.
You know, I just, something just popped into my head, Dave, and I don't know if Riley Township attended, but we had the USDA director was in town to talk about some of the different programs. They have a, I will get you the field number for the office, but they have a tremendous amount of funding mechanisms available for, for small, large communities, so on and so forth, and the, the rates are extremely favorable, the paybacks are really solid. I don't know if any of the other commissioners, you got a chance to attend that?
Yeah.
I've been with them a couple times, you know, and it's more, when you say USDA, everybody thinks it's agricultural-based, and they do public buildings, public infrastructure, so on and so forth, and, and, you know, 2.5% kind of stuff, 20, 30-year terms, those types of stuff. I'm not opposed to, you know, looking internally, trying to figure out how we can do something, but the USDA thing, after I got off the phone with you today, I thought, boy, this might be, this might be something that we probably need to look at, because to be quite honest, it's just not that bridge. I mean, we have, as you're well aware, the Chinatownship Bridge, which was down, that Dan Lowers found funding for, was going to be in 2.5, 2.7. We have a whole slew of bridges that are, you know, on a slippery slope here. And, you know, to your point that these small communities, they can't afford to take that big hit up front, but, you know, to do an extended payback period, that, that may very well be a good mechanism to be able to leverage some of that type of funding. So, I'm going to give you the gal's name and probably should...
Yeah, with the, from my understanding, is that St. Clair County has the second-most bridges for a county in the state of Michigan, with only Wayne County having more. But you take, like, Lynn Township, they're even half the funding that Riley has. Riley has roughly a $400,000 budget, and for their expenses, because I was the previous supervisor there, they only have about $40,000 to $50,000. They can put on 57 miles of roads. That's, Riley, I believe, is number one in the county for total mileage, for grading and stone and culverts, and they're not like a Fort Grass, or possibly a St. Clair, or Chinatownship that has road millages and quite a lot more money. So, for them, that'd be a fairly easy project for them to come up with matching funds. Riley doesn't have that option. We need to get the bridge back in service. So, hopefully, we can find some way to get the funds and have them pay back however it gets worked out, whether with Drain Commission, the county, or the USDA.
Okay, any other comments? In regards to that, I attended the same meeting with USDA, and usually, we think of small communities. USDA provides funding for any community under $50,000. So, every community in St. Clair County qualifies for either of those grants or loans. So, I guess I would just encourage, you know, if any other communities have any infrastructure needs, water, sewer, roads, bridges, you know, certainly, they need to look at the opportunities there. One of the things, too, that stuck out with me with the USDA, because a lot of times, and that project's so small, you wouldn't get a bond for $150,000.
No.
I mean, by 10 years old paperwork. The USDA funds don't have prepayment penalties, so generally, what happens if you have to go out and you have to bond for a project over a 20-year period, you got to let it run, you know, run its course, so you just, you just pay it off, you have prepayment penalties, things like that. So, so there, there, there's a lot of flexibility in what they can do, so.
Just for comparison, if you, if it's $150,000 that Riley has to come up with the matching funds, they came up with that money, said you have to put zero work in their roads for three years and use every cent, potentially, for the roads. So, there'd be no culverts put in, no gravel hauls, no chloride treatments, so it's a pretty big hit for them.
Okay, any other items? Any conceptual, I'm sorry, Commissioner Graytop?
Two things, very quickly. I want to give kudos to our Metropolitan Planning Commission. Dave Struck came down to Elginak on Tuesday and did a presentation that was required by law for the upcoming master plan. What they're trying to do in Elginak, actually, I think there's another year left on that, Dave, if I'm not mistaken, before it's actually due, and they're rolling the recreation plan together with it, because currently, Elginak, with their plan, the way it's set up, can't even apply for a DEQ, I mean, a DNR grant through the Land Grant Trust Fund. They can't do that, so our planning commission is putting it together. Dave did an absolutely awesome job down there when he was done with it. He's got them right on target. He's got all the dates all set up. He's working very well with the city manager, who's got things lined up, so good job, Dave, and your crew behind you. Thank you for taking good care of those people on that particular project. The second thing, we had what I would call a very, very good meeting. One of our jobs is to go to a lot of meetings, and we do, and there are meetings, and then there are meetings, and today, we had a very good meeting on broadband for St. Clair County. And it, it was very, very enlightening. It showed that there is a lot of stuff coming down the pipeline very, very soon. If you remember back about six months ago, when did the governor come here and do the... How long? January. January, he came here, and we did a rollout on his plan for connectivity through the state of Michigan, what he wanted to do, and he made his announcement here, which was very, very nice to do. They have $20 million earmarked right now, sitting there waiting to be distributed. Some of that money can go out in the form of grants and things of that nature, incentive money, so that maybe you get a company that comes in here that maybe won't have enough funding, they can get some grant and some support money to do that. We came very, very close about a year ago to getting Cotreville into where we need them. We've got a big dead hole in Cotreville, and I'm telling you, it was a little sad that we couldn't get enough people on board. We fell short by about 10% of the people that we needed, and so we couldn't get it financially. But with this new money coming down, it's, it's going to be good. They're setting some long-term goals. They want at least one gig at every house by 2026, 25 migs by 2022 is a short-term goal. So, those are all good things, and Jeff's story shortly, short time ago, about the guy up in Lexington that couldn't sell his house, the RISA superintendent told us today that when he was selling his house, he was one mile north of Lexington. He happened to have access to a DSL line, and the sale of his house was contingent upon having internet access, because this guy was going to work three or four days in Lexington and three or four days in Rochester. And the real estate people are finding they are not able to sell houses without this connectivity that we need everywhere. I have a letter, and it's very short, so I'm just going to take a moment to read it to you, but this is the plight that people are facing in some areas, and this is from a mother who says, "Hope all is well with you," and she sent us on to Lori Eschenberg. "Just wanted to let you know, I am unable to make today's scheduled meeting. 10:00 AM is right smack in the middle of my day, and I'm about an hour from there once I'm at work. If you could send an update after the meeting would be great." Here's the part I like. "We lost our temporary affordable fix for no-internet hotspot, which was about $200 bucks a month, and our kids are now back to going places to do their homework. My daughter is in a dual-enrolled senior this year, and she has to drive to my brother's house to do her homework. So, the struggle is still real here. I hate that my kids have to do their homework and their daily tasks in other locations." One more sentence after that, but you get the idea of what these people are facing, and part of the program is not only the connectivity issue there, but it is the educational issue for kids. The governor is very much aware of that, that this stuff is in place in order for these kids to do their homework. I left education 11 years ago, and two years prior to that, we ordered one set of textbooks for the entire eighth grade, and everybody had to have access to the internet in order to use those textbooks. We bought the license to go on and use them, we didn't buy the textbooks, and not everybody has that information. And there's this big hole in Cotreville, and we are very confident, because we had all the players at the table today that we needed, and everybody was very confident that we are going to put together, even before the due date, a package, and probably going to use Cotreville as our example to go out there and get this thing done. And once we get the first quadrant done in Cotreville with this money, the other three will probably fall in place right after that. And I have to, have to give a shout-out to RISA. They are absolutely super-partners in this deal. The county's involved in it, private industry is involved in it, the state is involved in it, RISA's involved in it, there's several other agencies. There was a private company owner there today involved in all of this stuff. It's just great stuff coming. It was a good meeting, lasted an hour and a half, but we came away feeling that we had actually accomplished something, and we were getting ready to go somewhere with this connectivity issue that we're having in the county.
I was just going to say, if you have kids school age, seeing as I'm a lot younger than the rest of you guys, which I do, that they, you have to get on the internet to do your homework. I mean, that's just part of your deal. You come in, you log in, your homework assignments are there. I mean, it's just the way of the world. And I can't imagine, in X amount of years, say, five years or 10 years from now, you try to sell your house, and you have no internet, no cellphone. It's gotta have just a major negative impact on your, on your real estate values. I can't even imagine.
You're going to stay put in that house, because nobody's going to buy it.
Okay, any other commissioners with items? I just have one. I'll be going up to Huron County on Monday, the state meeting on, I guess, trying to bring some uniformity into the assessment processes in counties, whether they be townships or cities. And I just have the uneasy feeling it means more cost to us. I'll be going up there for that meeting, so. Hopefully, Justin Sears will be able to attend it with me, and he certainly knows a heck of lot more about it than I ever will. But I know our committee at MAC has taken this up on more than one occasion. And so it's not just an issue that St. Clair County and townships and cities are concerned about, but every township and city and county in the state of Michigan is a little concerned about what the legislature is planning. But anyway, I will be doing that. Any conceptual initiatives from administration? Any old, no old business, new business? Brownfield redevelopment authority requirement, reappointments?
Motion to send it to full board.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. The annual survey and remonumentation grant for 2019?
Motion to send it on to the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Recommendations for no smoking in county parks?
Motion to move to the full board.
Support.
Any questions? I see Mark here, if you have any questions.
Are you gonna... Yeah, just, just a couple.
Okay.
In a nutshell, Mark, can you just tell us where you can smoke and where you can't?
The recommendation of the Park Commission is to designate all areas, parks and trails, as non-smoking. In addition, in discussions with Corporation Council, the pending ballot question about recreational marijuana is looming on the horizon, too, and has a potential impact on that, that the Park Commission hadn't even thought about that angle. But we're seeing some parks that, well, we have the light station where it sits next to a city park that has no smoking, and guess where all the cigarette butts are suddenly ending up? People are leaving the city park to come smoke in the county facility and leave their...
Trash.
Stuff. Bad stuff. So it's an ongoing trend amongst the parks and recreation industry with its connection to health and wellness to move forward on this. In your packet, you should have a Health Department letter of support. They've been, several years back, at their urging, we designated playgrounds and the splash pad as, you know, voluntary no-smoking areas, and that's worked out really well. The question is always enforcement, and the first choice is, you know, peer pressure and, you know, signage. And, but all rules at county parks, they are monitored by park staff, but if there's any enforcement, that's done by law enforcement. And I'm happy to report that very rarely happens. Usually, if there's a mention of invitation for a sheriff department employee to come talk to them, they usually comply with whatever the issue that staff person has brought up, so.
Are you allowing smoking anywhere in any of the parks?
Currently, the only restrictions are the voluntary restrictions on the playgrounds and good old splash pad. In addition to the effect of your county ordinance relative to within 25 feet of buildings, I guess we never checked whether a open-sided pavilion is a building or not, but it's an interesting question.
Anything with a roof over it, normally, they count as a...
Yeah, so I guess for years, technically, you're not supposed to be smoking in any of our pavilions, then.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yeah, I'm sure council will have this, but it's probably obvious, but for the enforcement, do we have municipal civil infraction ordinance in place? So if we have somebody that just refuses, the sheriff department, I imagine, probably the enforcing officer, and what action they take? Do we have a municipal civil infraction? Because the township's doing, that's where I know about it, that potentially, you've got $100 fine, $300, and $500 progresses. How would we enforce that?
What, as Mark pointed out, now, it's voluntary, peer pressure, whatever, and I believe the county has, I should know the answer to that, a municipal civil infraction ordinance. And what we would do, in fact, I think the county was the first one to have one. And then what we would do is just add that as an infraction if enforcement is necessary. And as you know, that then doesn't require taking a sheriff deputy's time to come and write the ticket. Other county employees can be authorized to do that.
I think to your point, it's a self-policing issue. Now, we've got Greg, how many, how many tickets have you wrote for bars and people smoking? And you can't have the smoke police, right? You know, I mean, we have enough things, and since it's been out, and, you know, and probably the guy that's screw you, you know, I'm going, you know.
So my own question is that we do have action to take, rather than just say...
I'm not a smoker, nor, I'm not a smoker, nor have ever been a smoker. And I sit there, and I go, man, if the guy's out on the Wadams to evoke a trail or something, he wants to light up, it's just like, have at it. You know, I mean, the enforcement piece of it, I'll support it, but, you know, to sit there and, you know, just to, I think it's more the awareness, hey, you know, there's no smoking here, so on and so forth, you know, that kind of thing.
But he brought up a very good point with marijuana coming up and our playgrounds and all. I think it's a good, good thing we're addressing now.
Any other questions? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Let's see. The 2019-2023 capital improvement program.
Make a motion that we send this on to the full board.
Support.
Yes, Commissioner Rushing.
Just a moment, while I talk to Carrie on it, and she answered my questions, that there are many, many projects in here, and each and every one will have to be brought to this board individually on its own merits and the funding for it. So I'm all for forwarding this to the full board.
Okay, any more questions?
Yeah, we had this in place when I first got on the board, then we got away from it, and we brought it back. I think, if anything, it's more of making department heads, you know, the awareness to the board, administration, that type of thing, versus just coming in, and this year, all of a sudden, we got, you know, three major capital, you know, projects that we weren't aware of coming down the pipeline, and then you gotta try to find the, you know, the funding to do it. So at least it kind of gives you an idea what the, you know, potential needs are long-term. You know, we had a meeting today to talk about something that probably never even thought about as a capital need two years ago, right? You know, and then these things pop up, things happen, and you're like, okay, now we gotta figure that out.
Lindsay, did you want to... Lindsay Wallace is here from Metropolitan Planning, and she headed it up. If there are any technical questions for, that they want to address, to Lindsay, I'm sure she... Did Commissioner Graytop put you on the spot?
He likes to do that.
Oh, okay. Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. The CMU, what's that stand for?
The Harvard of the North.
The Harvard of the North.
Since that's my...
Archaeological Field Study School at the light station.
Make a motion to move to full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions? Mark is here, if you have any specific...
This is in central Michigan, is it?
It happens to be, yes.
I guess I can support it.
All right, seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. The Blue Ways of St. Clair County Strategic Planning Grant?
Motion to send to full board.
Support.
Okay. That's pretty, Lori's here, if you have any questions. So we, we've got someone else from Planning Commission that can certainly answer them. Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. The Blue Ways Strategic Plan Cooperative Agreement with the Land Information Access Association.
Motion to send it to the full board.
We have a second?
Yep.
We are seconded by Mr. Graytop.
Quick conversation here, Howard, and this will probably tie the next three of them into it. As you know, I've talked recently, we've been working on the Great Lakes, Two Lake Trail. One piece of this, the starting point is in South Haven, if I'm not mistaken, David. They want an ending point somewhere on the eastern part of the state, hence Port Huron. There is a funding partner that is going to perhaps assist with filling the gap to assist with the completion of the trail system. If you look from the South Haven to, you know, Port Huron, there's some gaps in the system. We've recently received a SEMCOG planning grant that's going to be coming for you before this evening. We have potentially some other funding mechanisms that are going to be coming, you know, via through our foundations, that are going to pay for an economic analysis along to complete the funding piece. We have a very small portion to match, in kind, a little bit of county money, perhaps. This is something that, the reality of getting this accomplished now over an X amount of period of time is real now. So you're going to hear a lot more conversations about this, you know, moving forward, the first piece of it's putting the planning piece. We had talked about putting a, it ties into the McComb Orchard Trail, which ties into St. Clair, which ties into the whole Bridge to Bay network. So it's kind of, it's, you know, completing that whole connection. And we wanted to set a group up, because what I wanted to do on this was to keep the political piece out of the room. So we had, you know, I talked to you guys before about forming a committee, Kurt Weston, Bill Hazelton, Dave Struck, Andrea LaFontaine's actually working for the Great Lake to Lake Trail, Randy Myers, Mark Brochu, and possibly somebody from McComb to work on the connection. Really, you know, let them, because you're not going to do this all in one year. You know, this is, this is an expensive, long-term project that, you know, the commitment in place to do this is, it's not going to happen overnight. And really, let them then make the decisions as far as what pieces of the trails get put in place in a particular year, and just us support them. Because what I don't want to run into is he who screams the loudest gets it, right? You know, if it doesn't make sense. So rely on that group to be able to bring a recommendation back to this board, this makes the most sense for those reasons, and, okay, let's move forward on it, so.
Commissioner Graytop.
Yeah, back on the Blue Ways for just a second. I don't know if the commissioners are aware of it, but last year, we managed to get a small budget for Blue Ways alone, very small budget, but it was enough that they could make matches that they needed to make in order to get some of the grants and stuff like that. And I believe this year, you're going to do the entire website over again.
We're updating the whole Blue Ways website. It's six years old, and it needs updates. So because of the money we got last year, we're spending that in 2018, and we'll be done before December.
Good. So, yeah, it's, with the national trail recognition we got, and we're up to 21...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two trails now, and they're all over the entire area. It's an excellent program. We're getting lots of good recognition, lots of press in different magazines and publications throughout the whole nation.
This week, our National Water Trail is on live.
Yeah. So good stuff, really good.
Well, my only comment is, as we look at these water trails, we might want to introduce Commissioner Tomlin to kayaking. It might be a lot safer than bicycling.
I think you're right.
He wears two life jackets.
You think we're too late with that?
I can take you guys on a panel next year about the commissioner of paddle loading. You can look at our universally accessible paddock. Mark?
I'm in. But, no, seriously.
I got a jet ski, how would you...
Commissioner, road trip. Yeah. But seriously, I walk the riverwalk considerably, and it never ceases to amaze me, the number of people out, especially the over-50 group. They're, they're out there. And you normally think of, you know, trails and these things for, for younger people to bicycle and to walk. And I can assure you, there are a lot of older people out there keeping help.
Younger people are doing this.
Oh, okay. But anyway.
Did you see Jeff out there?
He's going to start now that he's over 50. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Let's see, next item, Resolution 1820, requesting Lighthouse Beach as an official end of the Great Lakes to Lake Trail Route 1.
Make a motion to move to full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner, oops, Commissioner, Director, sorry about that. Just a pay cut there for you, Mark.
Over the last two years, I've been involved with Michigan Trails and Greenways Alliance, who is the lead agency pulling together the Great Lake to Lake Trails. And part of the planning effort is, they've decided that each participating county would be the sole responsible party for designating routes within their jurisdiction, so that you wouldn't have too many cooks in the kitchen. So in our case, any route, any part of it in St. Clair County will eventually come to you as a result of that planning effort that Commissioner Bohm just told you about. But one of the early pieces, we wanted to get in place and talk to the city of Port Huron, where do you want to host the endpoint of the trail? It works out very well in that they have a DNR grant to re-renovate Lighthouse Beach, so that they're going to incorporate some kind of monument or endpoint at Lighthouse Beach. So this is the first piece of that puzzle, and you're being asked to approve that endpoint as your, as part of your capacity over the year section of the Great Lake to Lake Trail, so.
Any other questions for Mark? Seeing none? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. The grant agreement approval, Community Foundation, for the strategic trails, trails strategic and current conditions analysis.
Motion to send it on to the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. One more item, the agreement with Smith Group for Trail Survey and Action Plan. This is for final action. We just did the other part of that. Need a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? This is, I think, a fantastic opportunity, and we'll get started on it right away. All, oh, roll.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes. Motion carried. All in favor? No, that's, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, the Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report. I would entertain a motion that we receive and file that report.
File a motion.
Support.
It's been moved and, and supported. Any other environmental or public works matters? Seeing none? Information only, the monthly park and recreation final, financial documents, and the Enbridge Community Open House.
Motion to receive and file.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Receive and file packets regarding environmental and public works matters?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion carried. It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
David, I'm getting thirsty.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tomlin? Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Graytop?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. Okay, moving on to item two, additions, deletion, and changes to the agenda. I see we have one. We're going to need a closed session requisition of property.
Make a motion that we put that after receive and file, item number 10. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion.[1795.88]
Approve the agenda as presented now.
Support. Second.
Discussion, yes. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. This time, do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? These citizens wishing to be heard. Seeing none? Do we have any updates?
Just Carrie, what's a budget schedule?
Danielle is still working on putting the final touches on the 2019 schedule. At this point, it should be presented to the Board of Commissioners in November.
Any other updates? Okay, moving on to conceptual initiatives. Do we have any? We do not. No old business. Moving on to new business, 7A, fiscal year 2018-2019, Region 10, PIHP Substance Use Disorder Funding Agreements. This is for final action.
So moved.
Have a second.
Support.
Any discussion? I believe we need a roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. Moving on to 7B, Substance Use Disorder Program Agreement with the KWB Strategies.
Strategies.
Strategies, yes, what you said.
Make the motion to move it to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, moving on to C, 7C, Health Department Manning Table Revision.
Make a motion, we send it on to the full board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. D, FOC Manning Table Request. That's a front of court. I talked with Renee on this. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do we need a roll call on this? Okay. Motion passed. Moving on to 7A, Revisions to Policy 243, Construction Project Bidding.
I'll make the motion to move it to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7F, Contract Approval Request, Kevin's Lawn Care and Snow Removal Incorporated. This is three-year.
Make a motion to approve, full board.
Support.
I do have a question for Carrie. And the question is, it has a do not exceed 100, and I don't have it right up, but I believe it's 181,000 total. But then it has a provision in there that this is going to be reopened. How can we have an agreement to 183, 181,000 max, but then we're going to reopen it possibly exceeding?
The initial three-year agreement is for that maximum, but the contract does allow for reopeners to extend it, and if we chose to do that, it would come back to the board at that time.
Okay. Were there, were there any other bidders, Carrie?
Actually, Ron Marsh is here, and he can speak to that. But yes, we, there were other bidders.
I didn't see any in the. Kevin's has been doing her stuff for quite a while now.
Good evening. Yeah, every three years, we open this up for an open bid process. This year, we tried to entice or encourage multiple contractors to come in, because we have a host of sites that need to be cleared every morning. So we tried to split them up with the downtown, let's call it the downtown campus, and then we used the west region to try and see if we could get lowered prices, if we could bundle it that way. We were not successful in doing that, but to answer your question directly, we did have two vendors that chose the all sites, all salt, all plow, seasonal rate. The low bidder was half of what the second bidder was. We are seeing increases across the board, and we did reach out to other entities. It's all related to the salt pricing. I reached out to Kirk Weston, and he said that they're seeing $20 per ton increase this year. So the increases are all related to the salt. We do have a opener each year to discuss salt pricing with the vendor that was selected,